This is the October 17th, 2023 regular meeting of the Chatham County Savannah Metropolitan Planning Commission. The board consists of Ms. Karen Jarrett, Chairwoman; Mr. Travis Coles, Vice Chairman; Mr. Wayne Noah, Secretary; Ms. Lorraine Bowles, Treasurer. Board members are: Mr. Dwayne Stevens; Ms. Elizabeth Epstein; Mr. Joseph Irvine; Mr. Tom Wildwoodie; Mr. Jureth Nortricia; Mr. Shredrick Coleman; Ms. Tracy Amick; Mr. Joseph Welch; Mr. Michael Cagler; and Mr. Jay Melder. The MPC Executive Director is Melanie Wilson.
Good afternoon. The October 17th regular meeting in Chatham County Savannah. Metropolitan Planning Commission will now come to order. We will pause for our invocation and then proceed immediately into the Pledge of Allegiance.
... things to gather together to make decisions that impact our community as a whole. I pray that every decision here would be of the benefit of this community.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. For staff, petitioners, and members of the public who are participating, our procedures will be as follows. The agenda is broken down into several parts. First, notices, proclamations, and acknowledgements. Next, the consent agenda, which consists of items for which the applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation, and there are no known objections. This will be followed by regular business, old business, and adjournment. For each agenda item, on regular business, the staff will make a presentation. The staff presentation will be followed by a presentation by the presenter or the petitioner, should they elect to do so. The petitioner will be allotted a timeframe of no more than 20 minutes. The board may then ask questions of the petitioner or staff for clarification. Afterwards, the floor will be open for public comment. If you wish to comment on the item that the board is considering at the time, members of the public that are in person must please fill out a speaker card and give it to staff. If you're participating virtually, use the raise your hand feature on your screen. Do not use the feature until the item you want to comment on is being considered. At the appropriate time, you will be recognized and staff will unmute your microphone. At the end of the allotted time, as determined by the chair, your microphone will be muted and the chair will recognize the next speaker. The total public comment time will be equivalent to the petitioner's presentation time. Therefore, it is important that you use the raise your hand feature during the hearing on that item if you want to speak on a petition. Once the floor is closed for public comment on a petition, no additional public speakers will be allowed. If you are not certain you want to speak, still use the raise your hand feature, or if in person, fill out the speaker card, and you will have the option to decline when your name is called. After public comment, the petitioner will have the opportunity for rebuttal and then additional needed questions by the board. Finally, the board will take action. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Cole, second.
Motion, second. Noah.
A voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Notices, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We had a personnel committee meeting this morning at 11:30. And any report on that?
We had a personnel committee meeting. It was a standard meeting for evaluations. We took no official actions.
All right, thank you. And we have a swearing in of MPC officers.
No judge.
No judge? Dwayne, maybe you should be... All right. Bear with me, this is my first time doing this. There were items requested to be removed from the final agenda. A map amendment.
Ms. Jarrett, we're going to have to hold off until he's here.
Okay.
He confirmed, and so we were expecting him to have been here by now, but...
Do you want to put Dwayne here or let Dwayne take over?
That wasn't him.
I guess, should we? I don't want us to get too deep into the agenda.
Yes, until you're sworn in. Yes, ma'am.
Want to switch for a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Part of my job.
Take my cookie.
So I'm sure this is a slightly unprecedented move. So what we're just in efforts to kind of keep the meeting going and give Judge Carp some opportunity to get here, I will assume my previous seat of chair and drive the meeting along through some of the easier pieces of the agenda, and then hopefully Judge will come in and swear in the new officers, and they will facilitate and move the meeting along accordingly. All right, so that brings us to the items requested to be removed from the final agenda. The first item is a map amendment, and that's request to rezone from an R2 to an EO to BN/EO at 202 Shipyard Road, and that petition number is Z-0923-000412. And then the next one in the items requested to be removed from the final agenda is a map amendment, request to rezone from an R2 to an EO to a PR dash, I mean, excuse me, a P-R-A/EO at 9965 Ferguson Avenue and 1001 Bethesda. That petition number is Z-0823-000406.
Cole's motion to remove items three and four from the final agenda.
Noah, second.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Coles and seconded by Mr. Noah to remove the items. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and those items are removed from the final agenda. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is items requested to be withdrawn. There is one, and that is the short-term vacation rental overlay district map text amendment at 501 East Bay Street, and that is petition number 23-004258-ZA. Do I have a motion to...
Motion to remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. We have a motion made by Mrs. Noah and seconded by Mr. Coleman to remove, approve the removal of, the withdrawal, I should say, of those items. If there's no discussion, we'll entertain a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Judge, come on. We're getting into the thick of it. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Again, the consent agenda consists of items for which the applicant is in agreement with staff recommendation and for which no known objections have been identified nor anticipated by staff. Let me finish this before I get you. Any objections raised that the meeting will result in the item being removed to the regular Mr. Cagler.
Thank you.
Wait, blank.
Just say, the only thing that is missing, there were three conditions that were listed that did not get recorded in the agenda, and I want to read those into the minutes, and if they're accepted, then we can go ahead and vote on them.
So you want to make note of...
The three conditions, yes.
The three conditions?
Yes.
We actually have some members of the public that would like to speak on this item. So I think, I think we typically would remove, yeah, so it says if there's any objections, we would have to move to the regular agenda.
That's fine.
So actually, what we'll need to do is I'll go ahead and we'll do the items for the approval of the meeting minutes, and then the item number eight, where we do the executing the contract, and we'll ask that one of the board members ask for item number seven to be removed from the consent agenda onto the regular agenda. And then what we'll do is we'll hear that one first, so there is no confusion, and we'll go accordingly. So if anybody would be willing to make that motion, that would be great.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven and that it be moved to the regular agenda.
Do we have a second? So a motion is made by Mr. Noah and seconded by Mr. Coleman that we approve the consent agenda and remove item numbers, with the exception of number seven, and moving that to the regular agenda. And just for the record, I'll read the other two items that are on the consent agenda, and that is the approval of our September 12th, 2023 meeting minutes. And then the other item is authorize the MPC Executive Director to execute a contract with Polaris Business Solutions. And that's just for the records, for the record. So the motion is on the floor, again, made by Mr. Noah and seconded by Mr. Coleman. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, and item number seven will be moved to the regular agenda. Let me, regular business, excuse me. All right, so we go to old business. There are none. And where's Judge? All right, all right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll call the regular business of the agenda. All right, so what we'll do for each item, so just for the public to understand what the proceedings will look like, again, just in case you missed it at the beginning, for each item on the regular business, staff will make a presentation, and the presentation will be followed by a presentation by the petitioner, should they elect to do so. The petitioner will be allotted a timeframe of no more than 20 minutes. The board may then ask questions of the petitioner or staff for clarification. Afterwards, the floor will be open for public comment. If you wish to comment on the item that the board is considering at that time, members of the public that are in person must fill out a speaker card and give it to staff. If you're participating virtually, use the raise your hand feature on your screen. Do not use the raise your hand feature until the item you want to comment on is being considered. At the appropriate time, you will be recognized and staff will unmute your phone, your microphone. We ask that you also unmute your microphone, and then, yeah, and then at the end of the allotted time, of your allotted time, as determined by the chair, your microphone will be muted, and the chair will recognize the next speaker. And just as we continue to go through, I ask that everybody make sure that phones are silenced. Comments and conversation amongst you all, keep that to a minimum and/or quiet, that would be greatly appreciated as we get into the part where everything absolutely needs to be captured for the record. So let me call that item, and the item that was moved from the consent agenda to our regular business is number seven, major subdivision Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center, Four Lakes Parkway and Old River Road. That petition number is 23-005044-sub-P. Mr. Morrow.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Edward Morrow, Development Services Staff. The item in front of you at present is a 12-lot major subdivision that most recently appeared before this board on June 30th, 2020, when Savannah's Economic Development Authority divided the subject parcels, and it is here for a further subdivision today. Again, currently, the request is to divide these lots into 12 lots located at the intersection of 760 Old River and Four Lakes Boulevard. All the parcels are zoned light industrial. The total area is 576.21 acres. Of this area, 315.49 acres has been dedicated for marshland, along with four common areas that you can see here, kind of on your screen. Actually, I'll make it a little bit smaller so that hopefully we can get more of it. The site is to be served by the City of Savannah Water and Sewer. The MPC did approve this previously with three conditions that I will read into the record now. The first one being that the project developer and subsequent pad owner developers are required to obtain permission from Chatham County Engineering related to issues that may affect road or other transportation in the unincorporated area. The second condition being that the project developer and subsequent pad developers of sites are required to obtain approval of the MPC, City of Savannah, and Chatham County Engineering concerning stormwater runoff or discharge. And the third condition being that a note be added to the subdivision, that county approval be required for matters that affect transportation systems within the unincorporated county and stormwater discharge off the site, which may impact property in the unincorporated county. Those were the three conditions upon which this subdivision was approved, and today, again, MPC staff recommends approval of the further subdivision in addition, sorry, with those three conditions, in addition to two others, that on the final plat, the applicant show the signature of a Georgia Registered Land Surveyor, and also that approval of the Chatham County Health Department and City Engineer be shown via their signatures on the final plat. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Anybody have questions for staff? Is the petitioner here and wish to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we fully support staff recommendation, but since there are apparently, I'm sorry, Harold Yellen, on behalf of the petitioner, since there are apparently folks here who wish to speak to this, I'll just reserve my time for rebuttal.
All right, thank you.
Save you time as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, this, any member of the board have anything for Mr. Yellen prior to? All right. Hearing none, we'll allow for the petitioners to, I mean, excuse me, the public to speak. Call Ms. Amanda Wilson first. May please state your name for the record, and given that the petitioner did not present, we'll have to truncate the time, just, we'll have to keep the time, you know, reasonable because, since the petitioner, because typically the public comment section would be equal to petitioner, but they didn't present.
Sure. My name is Amanda Wilson. Good afternoon. So I handed y'all all a packet from the 2020 meeting. We just have some concerns about this development that was addressed in the 2020 meeting and is not addressed in the staff report that was presented with, to y'all today. If you take a look at the highlighted portion, construction plans for each future parcel, including drainage plan, will be required prior to approval of the proposed development. I want y'all to know that construction has started on that property without the county's consent and without the, what was required to do of SITA and the city. Construction has begun. Ms. Jarrett said, address Old River Road, which looks like it's a two-lane road, and how are you going to accommodate traffic? No improvements have been made, and construction has begun. Then, number three, Ms. Jarrett said, how are we going to make sure the drainage system for each parcel works cohesively and not affecting the residents? Thomas Hutton said, a drainage study was complete for the entire parcel, including the adjacent parcel. That study concluded that post-development flow would not exceed pre-development flow. As I've shown y'all before, the flooding pictures, that, that study was incorrect. The county has, has said that the drainage package for this parcel was insufficient. Number four, Mr. Noah asked Ms. Dillon from SITA if she was committing SITA to make sure that the residents around the property would be taken care of and not have increased flooding due to the project. And Ms. Dillon said that she is working with residents and will continue to do so to make sure that the drainage is operating as designed. This is not happening. We are still having flooding issues, septic tank issues, all the original things are still going on. This is not happening. The county manager, Mr. Lee, said that the county has drainage concerns, and there hasn't been any study done outside of the parent parcel for discharge of stormwater, and that is part of the conditions that the county is demanding. Then, the motion, the staff, MPC staff recommended approval based upon the following conditions. I didn't highlight the lighting plan, the parent parcel address, the lift station B, all of these things. These were conditions, but you do see where I've highlighted the conditions were, that the buffer, required buffer be shown. The buffer shall be a vegetated buffer and shall be of density as to achieve not less than 70% opacity within three growing seasons. This is not, has not been done. This was a condition, still not done. And then the three points that Mr. Morrow brought up, those were conditions. And if you look at the very last page, this is an email from county engineer, Ms. Kuler, stating that the conditions have not been met as far as what was asked. The county has not received any of the information, and this was supposed to happen prior to construction. And construction is going on, construction is taking place, no buffers is put in place, flooding still continues, and the city is not holding SITA accountable for what's going on to the unincorporated Chatham County residents. I have a concern that staff is recommending approval, even though that the 2020 conditions have not been met. It's concerning that, that all of these conditions were not mentioned on the staff report, and I'm concerned that why is the city allowing this to happen, and who is supposed to be enforcing these codes? Thank you.
We'll go ahead and hear from Cheryl Sandala.
Ms. Amanda covered lives and government.
Okay, thank you. Would the petitioner like to respond to public comment?
Yes, sir, thank you. There seems to be some confusion as to why we're here and what this petition is all about, and it's important that perhaps I address what we are and what we are not. We are not a zoning petition. We are not here asking for a different zoning classification. We are zone light industrial. We're going to stay light industrial. Thank you. We're not a variance request. We're not asking for any variances of any kind. Every lot that we are putting before you is in absolute compliance with your subdivision ordinance, and we are certainly not a site plan review. And some of the comments I'm hearing are what I would ordinarily hear when a site plan is in fact being reviewed before you. What we are is a subdivision request, asking to create lots of record to be developed at a different time. And it's, it's interesting, for years, MPC, y'all probably haven't seen very many subdivisions for approval. I know we have new members and old members, but for years, subdivisions were approved by staff, on staff level. They were never brought to this full commission, and there's a reason for that. This subdivision that we're presenting to you is going through all of the city departments. It's going to go through traffic, water, sewer, every imaginable department that you can think of, and it will also need to go through those county departments as well before we can get full approval. What's before you today at this board is, are these lots correct, and are these lots in compliance with the City of Savannah zoning ordinance? That's all we're here for. We can go off and talk about all other kinds of issues which are tangential to this, but those are all being handled by other departments. It's always been told to me by folks who have been doing this longer than I have and by city and county attorneys, subdivisions are perfunctory. We're all entitled to subdivide our property because it is, it's a property right, and these are the lots that we're looking to put on this site. The concerns raised, I hear them, and we're not done yet. We still have departmental review to go through, but why we're here today is to create these lots of records that you see in front of you. And for that reason, we do fully support staff recommendation for the approval of these lots as part of a major subdivision. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Yeller. I'll start. I don't disagree with anything you said. However, I think what our public is doing is trying to find the proper avenue to raise concerns of what was expected from the previous vote and what they're actually seeing. And I think it's only right and only fair that we, you know, they've, they've recorded that information for the record. Can we take action on something like that? No. I completely understand, completely agree what our purview is, and I am going to urge that we make our decision today based off of that information, but I think us sitting here to be good stewards and help push forward a collaborative and smart and, I guess, growth in our city that serves everyone, I think we at least need to have the discussion and understand what it looks like and what the expectation was from the community coming from that meeting, understanding the conditions that were set forth, and at least being able to have that recorded for the record so that they can go to whatever that proper channel of enforcement, which we probably all need to get much tighter on realizing where the appropriate place for enforcement is. So I just say all that to say I'm, I'm fully hear you, I fully agree. I still urge the body to vote on what is here before us, even though we're hearing some things that does not align with what we voted for. We still have to make a determination based off of what the ordinance allows for and what's legal. And I want us to stay right there, but I just, I do want it to be very understood that when we vote in favor of certain things with the condition, it is also our expectation that our petitioners go out and do what they agreed to once the approval was offered up.
If I can piggyback on that comment, because this is still in process with other departments, including storm, drainage, traffic, all of the departments that the City of Savannah has, a park and tree, this will still be going before the City of Savannah and the Mayor and Alderman, and at that point in time, they will be looking at the subdivision from more of a site plan review of all the issues raised by the audience. That's not before you today, but it will be before city council. I don't know when. I'm going to probably be the last meeting in November or the first meeting in December, and I think that's the appropriate time to bring up these developmental issues. It will be coming before Mayor and Alderman.
Fair enough.
I just wanted to know that.
But I think, I think it's still a duty and a charge, and a courtesy, quite frankly, for us to honor getting out, if there is indeed work happening, like, let's be good neighbors about it. And if, you know, but I'm not trying to drive you in a specific direction, I just wanted to be, you know, capture that these are things that we agreed upon, and we want it to be, we want a delivery on both sides because we will be held to the same thing.
We agree, and just for the record, the work being done to my knowledge is clearing and grading. There's no, there's no construction of buildings or sites because we don't know what they are. So the activity is clearing and grading.
And that's a, and that's also an educational process, and that's why this dialogue is happening, because there's an educational opportunity here for the general public to understand what some of the process looks like. Some people don't know that there's a clearing and grading component of it, so it immediately looks like construction. So, you know...
Clearing and grading is construction.
I mean, technically, it's construction, but...
There's... Can I address?
We, no, no. We, no, no.
I think I can.
I believe one of our board members may have some position on it, so.
And just for clarity, so that we all understand, clearing and grading has an impact on stormwater management. And so therefore, if the conditions for stormwater management have not been met, should there be clearing and grading? And just so that we understand.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm happy to report that back to CETA. I will specifically report your comments to the folks at CETA.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important. And this is not me trying to grandstand or make a issue with CETA in particular, but I think we have to kind of get some of those types of projects on the rails. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jarrett.
That was basically, we gave conditions, and whether the governing body is addressing the conditions or not, the developer is responsible for those conditions, and it's the developer's duty to follow the intent of the conditions that we placed on them. So can you get CETA to get in touch with these residents and find out how to make it right?
I can. This major subdivision is sort of a subdivision that's just on top of.
I understand.
And the world has changed and this project has changed, and many of you know, earlier this year, we actually were going to rezon to heavy industrial, and we've pulled that petition. We're very comfortable with our existing light industrial, but we're trying to adapt as quickly as we can, and if we move too fast, I apologize on behalf of CETA. But I will communicate all of your concerns and know that we're not done.
Well, as a municipal engineer, I would have stopped the work if the flooding had been going on in my community, so let's get it straightened out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Cagler.
And thank you, Ms. Chair. And this is basically for staff. Can we perfect the record to make sure that what we sent over to city council has all of, you know, because I see some things associated with the buffer and everything. I want to make sure the record is complete when we send it over.
Anything else for Mr. Yeller? And what I'm going to allow for this, we didn't, I was, excuse me, can't get it out. I missed asking if we had any members of the public online. So what I'll do, Mr. Yeller, and I'll still allow for you to respond, but I'm going to allow for the individual that's online to offer up a comment, and then if you would, you'll have the opportunity to rebut that as well, and then we'll wrap and we'll take the necessary action.
Oh, we do.
Ms. What's that?
Oh, we do hear Carrie Bieber.
Yes, Ms. Carrie Bieber? If you would, state your name for the record, unmute yourself, and submit your comment.
I have unmuted her on my side.
Ms. Bieber, can you hear us? If you can hear us, we can't hear you.
Oh, she doesn't have a mic. I got a chat answer.
She's still showing, she's not showing a mic.
She doesn't have a mic to, like, she can talk with.
All right, Ms. Bieber, we tried. Apparently, there's no microphone on your end, so hopefully someone else, you can send an email or something, but hopefully your other members of the public have kind of touched on some of the points that you may have had, but for the sake of keeping the meeting moving along, we'll go ahead and continue on. All right? So that's, so nothing else from Mr. Yeller? All right, thank you, Mr. Yeller. And just to be reminded, everyone, board members, what we're taking action on, and that is subdivision, correct? Staff, yeah. All right, so strictly that. So I entertain the motion.
I'd like to move that we continue this until the next regular meeting to assure that the conditions that we've placed on this property are properly.
Carried out.
Carried out, yes.
We have a second. And then.
Epstein, second.
So there's a motion on the floor made by Ms. Jarrett and seconded by Ms. Epstein to continue this petition to the next regular meeting.
Sorry.
To give the petitioner the opportunity to align with and adhere to the conditions that were set forth. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Coleman, I think we just heard that our decision is based on the petition in hand and the criteria based on that, and that I don't believe that's one of the conditions to allow this continuation to be put forth. So I accept that it's been out there and seconded, but I don't think it's an appropriate motion.
Fair enough. What we'll do, since I've already accepted the motion and the second, we'll take the vote, and if it is your opinion and your position that it is not appropriate, just vote it down. And please, if there's a different motion, everybody has the opportunity to present a motion prior to a motion that does not work for you. So if there's a different motion, we'll entertain that motion and go accordingly.
Let me discuss it.
I mean, we can absolutely amend it. I mean, but if it's, but if, now, don't, just be mindful that the amendment would have to be an amendment opposed to a complete override of what that is. So if it's going to be a complete override of a continuance, it's probably best to just allow for the vote to move forward, let it fail, and then.
I understand, Ms. Chair, but procedurally, how can we vote on something that is not really before us?
True enough, fair enough. Ms. Ever, how, what does Robert Rules of Order say we should have be done? Should we just, I don't think we can just strike the motion down, correct?
Should we withdraw her motion?
I mean, yeah.
There's a procedural problem, if I could just.
Please, Mr. Yeller.
The things that you want me to have two weeks to accomplish, I can't do that without you saying first that the property is subdivided. The City of Savannah is waiting for you, and now you're saying you're waiting for the city or for me to deal with the city and county. The procedure used to be I would get approval from MPC staff before going to the city for subdivision approval. So I need this board to vote first as to whether the lots are appropriate and whether we're in compliance with the subdivision regs before I can then go out and do the things, Ms. Jarrett, that you're asking me to do. So sequentially, it's a little bit out of order, so procedurally.
I hear what you're saying. My concern is that this has been going on for quite a while. We've had them before us at a couple of different meetings, not just this meeting and the original meeting, and I just, I guess.
I think Mr. Cagler is making sure that everything gets communicated, including the 2020 decision. That will go to the City of Savannah.
I really want to make sure there's no work going on out there. That's the first thing. Work needs to stop if there is anything going on out there.
And I think, I think at the basis of all of this, that is the overlying concern from the public, that there's action being taken, it hasn't given the opportunity for...
Not appropriate.
Ms. Wilson, we can't allow that, we can't allow that.
Can I ask a quick question? We're here to vote on the subdivision.
Correct, that's it.
We need to vote on the subdivision.
Correct.
The issues, in my opinion, are a department issue. If they were to meet according to our vote with county department, then I would say that the county, being that it's annexed in the city area, contact the city area and have them put a stop work order. That's, I mean, the normal procedure, in my opinion.
Fair enough.
So we need to vote on the petition before us.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
I just want to echo that, we are not code enforcement.
I understand.
Yeah, and that was essentially my whole point of raising it, and that was my slip in allowing for the motion that doesn't align with the very thing that I said to move forward. But Ms. Jarrett has withdrawn her motion. There being, we need an actual motion that's going to go.
So the question is, do we have a fundamental issue with the subdivision? Yes or no?
I don't think that's the issue at all.
Mr. Coleman makes a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Cole's second.
Motion made by Mr. Coleman and seconded by Mr. Coles to approve staff's recommendation for the subdivision. Was there any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain a vote. Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Cagler?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Nottreka?
Yes.
Mr. Wildwood?
Yes.
That's two vote, yes, motion carries, and the project is approved.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Yeller, sorry about the confusion.
All right, thank you for consideration.
Absolutely. All right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda on the regular business, and that is the map amendment to rezone from R1-A/EO to a IP at 50 Diamond Causeway on a petition number is Z-0923-000411. Ms. Leto, Leto, I always mess it up, help me.
No problem. Leta.
This is a petition that is proposing to be rezoned to, from R1A, One Family Residential Environmental Overlay, to IP Institutional Professional. The purpose is, the intent for the rezoning is to allow the church to conduct outdoor outreach ministry activities that are ancillary to the church. You see, the zoning is R1A EO. Oh, is that the only map on here? I'm going to keep that map on there. So the subject property is located on the northeast corner of Diamond Causeway and Skidaway Island Park Road. The 50 Diamond Causeway parcel is developed with an existing church named Skidaway Community Church, which has a daycare within the building. The church would like to provide an ancillary use such as outdoor ministry activities in the R1A EO, which generally allows for one-family residents and allows for churches and other places of worship. However, the requested rezoning to IP would also allow for churches and places of worship as well as ancillary uses to the church. The future land use map designation designates the subject property as civic institutional, which is compatible with the proposed IP zoning district. The existing Skidaway Community Church has been active in the same location for over 50 years. Much of the property is shielded from view by mature trees. All outdoor activities are conducted at a small pavilion and grassy area interior to the property. In summary, the proposed use of the site for an existing church, daycare, and ancillary ministry activities for the purpose of outdoor outreach ministry activities is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan future land use map designation and with the residential and commercial pattern of the area. This pattern includes a large retirement community, residential single family, and a commercial center for Skidaway Island. The subject property is adjacent to residential zoning, institutional uses, commercial uses, and is located at a point in the neighborhood that would not impact the residential portion. In addition, as I mentioned before, the IP zoning allows for incidental or accessory uses in buildings, which is not permitted in the R1A One Family Residential Environmental Overlay zoning district that the property is currently zoned as. Staff finds that the proposed zoning is appropriate for this location, and I will bring up the... I brought up the wrong... The recommendation is based upon the review criteria. MPC staff recommends approval of the request to rezone from R1A EO to IP Institutional Professional. I'm here to answer any questions, and I believe the petitioner is here as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leto.
I have a question for staff.
Mr. Noah.
Can you put a list up of everything that's allowed in the IP district?
Sure.
And is this the zoning that was requested initially from the church?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So if we want to go over them, there is several residential, one-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, tourist home, I'm sorry, not, rooming and boarding house, fraternity or sorority house, the garage apartment. On page two, there's caretakers quarters, customary home occupation, and number 13 is the, is the use that they are requesting to include in the IP zoning, incidental or accessory uses in buildings. At the moment, this is provided that temporary accessory building shall not be permitted for more than 24-month period. However, we do have an intention to create all church place of worship to have incidental uses that are related to outdoor ministry, and we're continuing to work with the county on that. There is neighborhood, recreation center, golf courses, including the clubhouse is established in connection therewith. Number 17 is churches and other places of worship.
Can you scroll down, or I don't think we can see what you're...
Okay, 17 here is churches and other places of worship.
I'm sorry.
And then number 18 is convent or monastery. And then next page, number 20, nursery schools and kindergartens, number 20A, childcare center, 20B, adult daycare center, 20C, which is on the next page, 20C woman's shelter, 21, private schools, 22, colleges and universities, 23, hospitals and medical centers, 24, homes for age and for children.
So, Ms. Leto, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. Does, Ms. Leto, Leto, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Mr. Noah, does that satisfy, or, I mean, because we got, it's 25 pages.
I understand, but my point, you know, it started off with multifamily under what they're requesting. There's correctional institutions here, and I'm wondering if this is exactly where we want to go with this IP.
I follow.
And it goes on, medical centers, hospitals, I mean, the list goes on. That was my purpose for saying this. So I'm not so sure that what was mentioned in the pre-meeting about a tax amendment instead of a, so I just wanted to put that out there for the public.
No, no, totally understood, and I absolutely understand your reason and your purpose behind the line of question, and I guess another question we could potentially have, could potentially ask staff is, of the uses, what would be considered the most intense use from staff's understanding? And so we can get a frame of what potential uses could happen in the event that church no longer owns the property and is zoning, is IP.
We could condition for it to only be places of worship for a church.
I mean, but if that is divorced, yeah, okay. Okay. I mean, if that is what the board's desire is, then we can condition it as such. And I just ask that the board consider that. Mr. Kegler?
Yes, I think they what, when they applied for the rezoning, what was the intent? What, going through this with back and forth about the ancillary building and what they want to do there, what did they, how did you address that with staff?
So the present case originated from a code enforcement case originally related to an ancillary use that the church wanted to use. And so they were pursuing a variance and I recommended that they pursue rezoning instead because a rezoning and being situated in a non-residential district would allow them to have multiple facilities and kind of grow into sort of the ancillary uses that they would like to have that are common to all churches. Things like fellowship halls that might include, you know, prepared meals or daycares or any of the other ancillary services that churches provide. And so that recommendation was to allow them to have range of the full use of all the things that we might expect from a church. And so the church only, only has interest in becoming a church at this point. I think they would likely be amenable to the idea that right now this could be conditioned as a church use with all supporting ancillary uses and probably come back later with specific plans for any other uses that may not be ancillary.
Would a tax amendment not accomplish what they want?
In my opinion, it would not. This would be a condition to zoning. It would be to strike all other uses that would be permissible in the institutional institutional and professional zoning district and restrict the only permissible use as a church and expected ancillary uses.
And as you stated, oh, Mr. Kegler. Oh, now by saying as you stated, potentially come back in the event that there's additional use that's in the IP zoning designation, come back to this body for more. Because I'm just thinking, when you framed it and thinking of the functions of churches, a lot of churches have daycares associated with it. A lot of churches have some early learning type facilities. And some of those uses, if I'm not mistaken, were in the IP based off of what we just read. And thinking on that lies, I don't want to handcuff them, but I want to handcuff them. I don't, I don't want us to say, okay, let's go build a what is it? A sorority or frat house or something like that. You know, because that is allowed in the zoning zoning designation. So I guess my point is just kind of presenting it to the board to consider what that looks like and or take the recommendation that you just made where we isolate it for now. And then subsequently, if they want to change that, they have to come back.
Absolutely. So in my initial conversations, the uses did go a little bit further. They did not pin down anything specific, but there were things along the lines of a health clinic or senior housing, something to that effect. Again, I don't think those were short-term plans. I think they were long-term. And in the short-term, the interest was in kind of expanding so that they would not have issues with ancillary church activities. So again, I think at this juncture, rezoning with a restriction to churches and supporting ancillary activities would be appropriate.
Okay. I mean, we still have to hear from the petitioner so we can kind of get some input and get to better form our direction. But I think that was very helpful, Mr. Kegler. That suited you.
And how much public input did we get? If any, on that?
To my knowledge, no neighborhood meetings were held.
Anything else for staff?
Sorry. No letters were received, I'm sorry.
No, no letters of opposition or in favor were received per staff. All right. Do we have anything else for staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Melanie.
Yes, ma'am.
Make the suggestion. One of the ways to get around this is that you could have the supporting, you know, answer where it uses, but anything else they have to come back for special use permit.
Yeah.
That way the public would be verified if they're adding uses and be able to get input for approval by either the MPC or by the governing body.
Okay. Quick question for you. Would it be indeed a special use or just adding on to the uses that are already permitted? I just want to make sure that we're clear and make sure that they're using the proper terminology when they do come back.
Right, well, I think that, you know, there's some uses in all the districts where the uses kind of play a sort of a lie. If somebody wanted to do something that is more intense, that they would be required to have a special use permit. Because what that does is it lets the public know that they are wanting to do something that is a little bit more intense than general daycare that goes with or schools or, you know, maybe they decided they want to do a little mini coffee shop or something that would still be supported, but it's not the primary use. But in some cases, churches want to do something bigger. They might want to do a senior living facility. Well, that could be an ancillary use, but it's probably more of a special use because they're going to have to have more services that are needed to support that use. Whether it's looking at roads, whether it's something that would be used more often than typical times where they use. So you can have it so that you approve it, the zoning with some basic supporting uses. If you can figure those out at schools and, you know, things of that nature. And then anything else that would be more intense, have them come in as a special use permit. That's what we do. If you think about it with alcohol licenses and special permits that we would be for the city when they come in. We look at a set of conditions to look at what's around it and whether it is something that is, should be allowed or not.
Okay. No, I agree. And I think we're headed down that route. I just, I was asking because I wanted to make sure that we did not were careful with the language in regards to special use being that in a lot of these uses that we are making mention of are permitted by right under the current zoning designation that they're seeking. So I just wanted to be leery and careful about using the term special use because it's technically wouldn't be special use. It would just be, I guess, should be, just be adding of the uses.
Well, actually, the, my recommendation was not was basically that, that if you decided to move forward with the uses, that you limit it to the ancillary uses.
Right.
But as a condition of that, any added things from the uses that are allowed be looked at as a special use. So it's not, it's not saying that they can't. It's saying if they're going to come in and add uses the way that you are going to do reviews through a special use permit. That's all.
I got you.
Yeah, it does the same, it does the same thing, but it's just as they're adding uses that are already allowed if there's something that folks don't want, at least the public is an opportunity to know that the church or that someone is making a request to add a use. And that has been done, at least on the city side of the house. That's done quite often.
Yeah, and I agree. I think
Special use permit, it's just deciding who approves it. Is it something that MPC would approve it? Or is that something that we go to the county commission to approve, you know, of adding, you know, uses as they come in to be approved?
Gotcha. Everybody on the board, on the dice sheet, you got that? All right, cool. So if there's nothing else for staff, we will hear from the petitioner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see everyone here. Quentin Marlin, on behalf of the petitioner. And I have Pastor Hira Wallace and a couple other members from the church if there are any questions. But, you know, this was the recommendation of staff to file a petition in this way. We, after a meeting, we went that route. Have no issues with the limitation of use. The pastor's not going to have a fraternity house there anytime soon. So, but, so we have no issue with restricting it to church ancillary uses.
Okay.
Like Melanie said, you know, they have a daycare already there.
Right.
You know, it's not increasing foot traffic or vehicle traffic. It's people coming into the church for church purposes.
Yeah, and I think, oh. I think the concern, I think for me anyway, I think the daycare center is one that is already allowed on here. And making sure that we combine that with, say, ancillary services, if that is not indeed specifically relegated to the ancillary service. Because I think it is an individual call-out on here, if I'm not mistaken, from looking at the list. And if that's the case, I just want to make sure that we are crafted in a way that we don't strike out the things that we are hearing and understanding to allow. And then yet still striking out the things that we want y'all to come back for, if y'all want to do it.
I just have a clarification question. So when you submitted your application, this was not your original intent or request?
No, we initially submitted a zoning variance application that staff asked us to remove and resubmit a rezoning after speaking with Mr. Marlin here.
Thank you. That's what I asked earlier and that was not the answer I got.
Gotcha. Anything for the petitioner? All right, we'll call you back up in the event that anybody from the public has anything to say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marlin. All right, we'll now hear from the public. Will, please state your name for the record. Do we have a speaker card? Ms. Woods, one moment.
For this item, I didn't understand that it was coming up. I have an item card for another one. May I say something about this? I didn't realize that this was on the agenda.
Ms. Woods, you're a frequent flyer, so I'll allow you a little bit of time. We, because we appreciate, no, we appreciate your participation is essentially what I'm saying. So we'll go ahead and allow.
Have we met before? My name is Artis Wood. I'm familiar with this property. It's absolutely lovely. But I want clarification on what it is that, why do they want a variance? Why do they need that? Because there's several things as a church that they can do. Did you all get that? Why, why did you?
I'll let, I'll let staff give you a
Yeah, and then I just have one follow-up question.
Okay.
I apologize, Chairman Noah. Sorry, Commissioner Noah, I did not understand your question the first time. So the reason why they're rezoning, these two things are very much related. They are residentially zoned. There are things that a church does not have the ability to do in a residential zone that it could more freely do in a different zone that would not necessarily be like a commercial zone, but you want them to allow things that are institutional more or less. So the initial petition would have been kind of a Band-Aid on what was really the need to be properly zoned as institutional professional. So it wasn't an attempt to sort of subvert their will or anything. It was a, let's put you on a path because we had conversations about this. And again, we also had conversations about future uses of the church parcel. So again, even in my understanding, I don't get the impression that there's a desire to do things that are large and, say, sweeping changes. They want to maintain a church, but they just want to be able to have, you know, outdoor worship services and other ancillary services in order to enhance what's already happening in the building as we would see for any other church.
Mr. Marlin, can you state why this initially came, even came to the surface to the public?
I will say that when my predecessor left, this was among the first group of cases that I was handed. I understand this was a code enforcement case that came in. Once I looked at it, it was a request where the church had asked to extend another power. They wanted another power meter, in essence. They had established a trailer, a trailer next to kind of a pad in sort of a grassed-in area on their parcel. And the intent was to establish a coffee shop in what was, in essence, it was like a tiny home on a trailer, something like that. And so this was in support, infrastructure in support of this semi-permanent coffee shop. That's how this came up. Again, when I saw that, I said, this is likely not the best approach. I rushed out, I said, hey, let me meet with you. Let me understand what you're trying to do. And so in the course of kind of understanding what it is that they wanted to accomplish, I said, well, we can resolve some of those issues by rezoning you because you could have multiple structures that are all in support of what it is that you're trying to do. It's appropriate within this institutional professional zoning district. So in kind of some back and forth with the county, I understand that they may or may not have an interest in resolving all of the specifics related to the coffee shop with this. But there is an interest in still moving forward with the rezoning because again, I understand that they have future aspirations where having institutional professional zoning would be more in line with those. So no immediate changes proposed. But again, the coffee shop, I do think, is a part of this and they would be able to establish other structures, not just for the purpose of the coffee shop, but for any other ancillary and supporting uses that we would ordinarily expect of the church.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Wood?
I so appreciate your comment, Mr. Hora, because I think you're opening up a door to a variety of things. And I've never heard a church have the right to put up a coffee shop either. So I think we're a little premature here. And, you know, you can say, well, you can have a little school or something, but then you look at Calvary and it has a whole city block. I mean, not that it shouldn't be there, but I was saying, you're opening the Pandora's box here if you just rezone because they want a little coffee shop. I think wait till they really have something they want and let the people of that area know about it. I'm surprised nobody's here from that area. There should be notification and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Any other members of the public?
Just for clarification, if this is a rezoning petition, there would have been notice, right?
I can speak to it as well. There was notice sent to all neighboring properties. There's a sign up on Diamond Causeway, clear as day when you ride by it. And there was actually a sign put up prior to that for the variance. So longer than the period just for this application, for much longer, starting back in, I believe, July, a sign's been sitting out there. So if people had an issue with it, they would have said something by now. I will tell you, I've heard from only one person. One of the, Curtis Lewis called me the other day and I spoke with him and he had no objection after I told him what we had going on. But, you know, it's, like I said, we have no issue with the restrictions. We're looking to maintain a church with ancillary uses for the church. And even the term coffee shops, even a little misleading. I think there's some photos in your packet. It's a small trailer for which people get free coffee. They can give a donation if they like. You're talking about church parishioners, visitors, and parents who are dropping off and picking up their kids at the daycare. You can't see it from the road. So you don't even know it's there unless you're already coming into the back parking lot.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kegler?
And just for clarification to board members, the only reason this came up was they wanted power to the structure. And that's kind of the only reason this is here because you can't have dual power to a non, a semi-permanent. I won't say it's permanent, but it's a semi-permanent structure there.
All right.
And if I'm, Chairman, this is Melanie. Just very quickly, I spent time talking with the advocate too. And I strongly encourage them to begin to ask for this rezoning because it's the rezoning that would occur if we still have environmental overlays. So I want to make sure that everybody's good about that. But most churches, a lot of churches are sitting in a different zoning district and they do have a lot of things that they need to do. But because they're in an environmental overlay and because they have had some technical issues, it's a very different ballgame than Calvary, which was mentioned, that's located, you know, in the city where this is located in the county, which have different set of rules. So that's the other reason too, after talking to them about what they're thinking about doing and/or for them not to have to deal with any other violations as well as other issues. This takes care of a variety of things in one shot.
We appreciate it. We entertain the motion if there's no more discussion.
I just have one question. How long has the trailer been there?
Oh, that's a petitioner question.
Just how long? A year? Two years?
I think about a year.
Okay, thank you.
It's not operational currently. It's just sitting there.
Gotcha.
But, you know, Mr. Kegler's correct. It's, you know, and some of you might know, I sat on the county zoning board for quite some time, including Mr. Noah, and we would get these petitions, especially Wilmington Island. People with the long, deep lots wanted to put a garage in the front, also run power to it. And we would do variances for those things. So that's where the real issue came up. A power beater got put in unbeknownst to them. That was not allowed. And we started going down this track of, well, how do we get on the right path?
Right, makes sense. All right, if there's no further discussion, we entertain the motion.
Just for clarity, were we putting conditions to limit the use if we do the rezon?
That is what your desire.
Then I would like clarification on how we phrase that specifically.
Can I offer what we, the petitioner might ask for?
We're allowed.
Sure.
To be rezoned as requested, but limited to use as a church and ancillary uses to a church use. The school's already allowed, but yes, the school would...
I think, I don't want to speak for you. I think that the trick is defining ancillary because it's a lot of things that can come across as an ancillary function of the church. And then it'd be like, oh, what did we just do? So I think that's, and I don't want to overcomplicate it, but I think that's kind of where some of the slippery slope comes in.
Is there, on the permitted use table, there's specific item numbers, right, that would define that? Which was seventeen and...
So there's a church use, there's a daycare use, and then there's also ancillary use.
Okay.
So, you know, the county hasn't defined what exactly that means. I think there's some level of common sense that just has to be applied of, is it ancillary to use as a church?
Fair enough.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation for approval, but limit the uses to items seventeen, a little help from staff for the other items.
You want to leave it to ancillary, Travis?
Okay.
We leave it ancillary.
Sorry, I'm just going to jump up just to say, principal use is church. Anything else is secondary. When we say ancillary, we mean that the principal use of this property is that it is a church. There can be no independent school or daycare. If we go that route, it might look as though we're going to say that these might be allowed to come here in the future when we're interpreting these conditions. So what I would recommend is we say that a church is the principal use. Any other ancillary uses are only in support of the principal use as a church. So even a daycare owned by the church, coffee ministry owned by the church, all of that.
Gotcha, that's fair. That worked.
How do I phrase that in the motion?
Good question. I can't, I'm not making the motions.
So I make the motion that we approve the staff's recommendation for the rezoning of the property with the condition that the only uses be for church use and ancillary church use. Any other use would have to come back before this body.
Noah's second.
All right, motion stated, motion put forward by Mr. Coles and second by Mr. Noah. And we all heard the motion. I don't want to try to reiterate that. So is there any discussion on said motion? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a vote. Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Kegler?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Nocrika?
Yes.
Mr. Wildwoody?
Yes.
Our two vote yes. Motion carries, and the project is approved. Thank you all.
Thank you all for your time, and I want to especially thank staff as well for all their hard work on this one. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. So we will now interrupt your regularly scheduled program. Our wonderful judges here, we appreciate this hard work and civic duty. Judge Karp, it's your show, my friend.
All right, well, thank you all very much. Y'all, excuse me while I make this official here. First of all, I'm sorry I'm not here at the beginning like as was scheduled. I was in the middle of, well, the closing arguments in a murder trial and could not get away right when I wanted to, but I was so eager to get here as soon as I could that I got a sheriff's escort, as y'all can see.
That's definitely more important than what we're doing.
I got right over here. Well, you know, I want to say that what y'all are doing here is very important. I said this when I was here last year, but I mean it. The work of this commission is important to the quality of life of everybody that lives in Savannah and Chatham County. And I know that everybody here takes that obligation very seriously. And I'm proud to play a little small part in this, to swear in the officers here. I used my one anecdote about the MPC last time I was here, so I hate to tell the same joke twice. All I will say is that last time, my joke was about what kind of lunch they served to y'all and how I heard in the old days it was from the exchange down on River Street. And I can only hope that you continue to be as well-fed as you were in years past. And so with that, I believe I'm swearing in Ms. Jarrett as chairwoman, and Mr. Coles as vice chair, and Mr. Noah as secretary, and Ms. Bowles as treasurer. And so what I'm going to do in a second, I'm going to raise my right hand, and I'm going to read the oath, and when I'm done, you may all each respond with "I do," okay? So if you would, please raise your right hands. Does each of you solemnly swear that you hold no position of public trust or private interest which places you in a position of conflict of purpose with the Charter of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and that in accordance with the constitutions of the United States and the state of Georgia, the laws of this state, and all applicable local ordinances, you will faithfully discharge your duties as officers of said commission and deciding each matter that shall come before the commission on its merits alone without fear or favor with regard to any affected parties or agencies? Please respond with "I do."
I do.
All right, well, congratulations. I'd like to add my own oath that none of your decisions will be appealed to Superior Court, but I don't think that that would hold up. So with that, folks, I'm going to let you get back to your meeting, but thank you for letting me come in here in the middle and interrupt y'all. Again, the work that y'all do here is very important, and everybody in Chatham County, whether they know what y'all do or not, owes you a debt of gratitude for your service. I thank you very much, and please forgive me for being late. I'm glad I got to be here and do it all. So thanks very much, folks. Well, that's very nice. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Bear with me while I try to figure out what I'm doing here. Okay, we are done with everything except for 10 and 11, I believe. And item 10 is a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment 505 East 54th Street, number 23-004628-ZA.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Edward Morrow Development Services. So the present petition in front of you is a request to amend the future land use map for the property at 505 East 54th Street. It is the Gould Cottage in the Chatham Crescent, Ardsley Park, Ardmore District. There we go, that's what I was looking for. The petitioner is requesting to amend the future land use map from its current designation of residential suburban, single-family to residential general. And this amendment is requested in association with a proposal to develop the historic children's home that's on the property as a multifamily housing development in addition to some proposed new construction. Again, the site is within the Ardmore Conservation District, and the purpose of that is to preserve Savannah's older historic neighborhoods that do not have the benefit of a local district to protect them. And so in essence, what that does is to establish kind of this protocol where demolition is conditioned on approval of the Historic Preservation Commission. So the historic property that is committed for preservation in the current petition, if for some reason this were to not go forward, demolition of the structure must be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. All right, so the current character area again is residential suburban, single-family. And this is a character area that's identified by the Comprehensive Plan for Single Family Detached Residential Dwelling Units at a density not to exceed five gross dwelling units per acre. It does also permit certain non-residential uses that are compatible, but again, on a very limited scale. And the proposed character area is the residential general character area. And this would prevent, this would allow a wider range of dwelling units on this property, including multifamily, attached, and small lot, single-family, as well as mixed use with upper story residential. And the point here is to get us to this 10 units per dwelling acre, just to increase the number of units that would be permitted, even to fill in the existing Gould Cottage. An amendment of this future land use designation would be required. In looking at the present petition, staff determined that the best use, regardless of the petition that you're going to hear next, would be to allow this particular designation to change. So the residential suburban, residential suburban, single-family district permits development up to five dwelling units per acre. In the current zoning district for the property, the RSF 6, permits development up to 7.26. So you can already see, even if we didn't change the zoning at all, there's a bit of a de-densification that would happen if things were allowed to kind of run their natural course. And so in essence, this would move this particular property into a position that it could reasonably be used for a variety of other uses, such as any of those non-residential uses that would be appropriate within a community context, like a library or a community center, any of those things. It would allow any of those particular things to happen. Right now, in essence, we're looking at a property that, without some sort of intervention, preservation, HPC, would be required to allow its demolition. And then it would come back, and it would be developed as single-family homes right now if nothing were to happen. But again, we can imagine what it is that we would be looking at to go through the process to get HPC's approval on such a demolition. Right now, with the structure as it is, if we did not consider residential, I'm understanding that K through 12 use and daycare were revisited again earlier this year. And so we are within the one-year timeframe where consideration of those uses would still be appropriate without any further action. But again, the only things that we could do here, we are considering K through 12 and daycare, were this not converted for some other use in the interest of preserving the building. Again, this is in the interest of preserving the historic structure that's on the parcel, which it has been since about 1930. And the adjacency of this particular parcel, while we have seen some of these corner parcels that are adjacent to Hull Park developed for residential purposes, the rhomboid shape of the park makes it very difficult to use those parcels in a maximal sense. It produces parcels where you don't get full utilization, and the configuration of those parcels is somewhat odd, though it has been successfully done. And again, just to note that most of those parcels that had been developed as single-family, they don't meet current development standards. So nonetheless, we're looking at a situation where something needs to be done in order to address this parcel. And so approval of this as residential general would open up the door so that not only multifamily residential, but any potentially desirable non-residential uses that are permissible within the context of this zoning district would be permissible. In looking at the, actually, NUZO does not establish criteria, but in looking at number one, the relationship of the proposed amendment to the existing and future land use depicted, this represents an effort to realign the future land use of the parcel with its historic use. Again, when these particular parcels that are adjoining the park are redeveloped, their configuration is awkward and challenging. The second criteria, in looking at the comprehensive plan, there is some support there in Plan 2040 for this redesignation. Under Quality of Life Historic Resources, HP 3.3, says that the comprehensive plan, sorry, that we should seek to promote and support reinvestment in older and historic places as a key component of community resiliency. And so that's one policy that is in support of the redesignation. The Gould Cottage is likely a historic contributing structure, and it is also a significant part of Savannah's cultural and architectural legacy. And so the structure has been maintained and repurposed over the course of its lifetime, but it has likely reached an age where renovation and maintenance by most small institutional uses is financially infeasible. And so the requested proposal offers the opportunity to restore the historic structure and enhance the site in a manner consistent with the character and vibrancy of the historic district in which it's situated. In moving to criteria number three, other professional planning principles, practices, and standards. Again, this is located within the Ardmore Conservation District. The intent of that district is to ensure that historic resources are preserved and not demolished. And so again, this would have to come before HPC in order to approve its demolition. The final one, written comments, evidence, and testimony of the public. So MPC staff did receive several comments in opposition to this request. And this is largely due to the historically single-family character of the area. And so several folks expressed a desire to continue to see this in kind of that single-family pattern of development. And it was also recommended that another institutional user should be pursued. So someone that would continue to use the site as a school or some other user that would find the large footprint appropriate in the existing structure without additional units proposed. Finally, the petitioner's agent did report that there was a successful open house on the site on October 5th. They reported there were approximately 50 guests in attendance, and that the overall sentiment was positive at the end of that open house, given that they had the opportunity to address rumors and misinformation. So with that, MPC staff recommends approval of the requested full amendment to residential general. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Morrow? All right, is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, for the petitioner, Josh Yellen. And I will defer to you and not to put Mr. Morrow back on the spot whether you want to take both petitions as one. I was prepared to talk about both of them at the same time because we have the comp plan amendment along with the rezoning. In practical terms, I don't see one moving forward without the other. But so if I put Mr. Morrow back on the spot without giving him a time to take a break, I hope that's okay. So, thank you all.
Okay, so let me switch over. And I promise my other report is much more visual. That's the application and staff report. Okay, so again, in kind of looking at the rezoning that is requested in association with this future land use map, as I stated in the pre-meeting, I think the principal meeting that we're considering, the principal reason why we're considering this is because there is an existing historic structure on the property. That's one of the principal drivers of this. And so in looking at that, the petitioner has come forward with a request to rezone the subject property at 505 East 54th Street from residential, single-family 6, RSF 6, to residential, multifamily 2-19. So that's RMF 2 with a density of 19. And this is for the purpose of developing the subject parcel and its existing children's home, as well as the cottage house in the rear, along with three proposed quadruplex units to contain a total of 12 units. The total proposed maximum unit count would be 25 units on the property, and that results in a gross density of 18.23. So again, that's dividing 25 units by 1.37 acres. That's how we came up with that 18.23. So the site, the subject parcel contains 1.37 acres, or about 59,677 square feet. And it contains a historic orphanage that was built in about 1930. And most recently, it has served as the Havisham School, which was a primary and secondary school. The principal facility is listed by the Board of Assessors as having 11,926 square feet, and the carriage house is having 748 square feet. So those are the footprints of those two existing structures. In looking at the existing zoning, the area is Zoned RSF 6, Residential Single Family 6, which is a zoning district that requires, again, principal use, single-family home, detached 60 square foot of frontage, and minimum area of 6,000 square feet. And this permits a gross density of 7.26 units per acre. This is an area where the parcel fabric is extremely regular. When you look at it, there is some variation in size, generally speaking, but it's very regular parcel fabric. So the understanding that this is principally single-family district is, you know, not taken lightly. It's very clear. When you look to the north, you do see that there are single-family homes, and hidden in there, there are actually some quadruplex units that you can see all around. Again, with the exception of Hull Park and Living By and Christian Maternity Home, which right next door, similarly situated parcel at about 1.36 acres. With regard to public notice, we are required to send mailers to all residents that are within 300 feet of the parcel boundaries and to post signs. All of the required public notice requirements were met for this particular petition. In the initial petition, as this came forward during the last review cycle, we asked the petitioner to have a look at it. And so there was an initial meeting with the neighborhood association president. And subsequently, there was an open house that was held in order to address the public's concerns. So in the course of these two review cycles, the neighborhood was duly notified. And many of them had the opportunity to show up in person and to address the petitioner and to talk about what their concerns were. Again, MPC staff did receive several comments that were in opposition. You can see those attached to the final agenda. You may have also seen some of them prior to... You may have also seen some of them prior to this meeting when we released the agenda. But with regard to impact and suitability, so public services and facilities would ultimately be provided by the City of Savannah. And so we would be looking at stormwater, obviously, transportation, and all of those impacts as we went through the specific development plan process for this parcel. I will also say that right now, again, development on this particular set of parcels, just because they're adjacent to a rhomboid-shaped park, it's going to make it challenging and it's going to make it difficult in a context where a clear front rear insides are anticipated by the zoning ordinance. And so you've got a lot of triangular-shaped parcels that are just not going to meet development standards. And so this one would also have to come back to address some front setback challenges at this point that you can see from the site plan. An interesting feature with regard to transportation and transit with this particular zoning district, RMF district, the idea is that these districts would be placed kind of in proximity of transit. And so here you can see where I have laid out the distances to the closest bus stops. By my calculation, these are within appropriate distance to bus lines and bus stops in accordance with the requirements of the zoning district. Also, you have just heard our case for adjusting the future land use map, again, to allow something that is more consistent with what has already been happening, sorry, something more consistent than what it is that currently our policy documents would support, right? So if we let things alone, the idea is that this would be developed as single-family homes. And so we've seen how some of that has worked out. And so addressing the future land use map is going to be important in order to allow that large footprint to remain and be used as some other appropriate use. Again, the existing zoning district, the requirements, 60 foot of frontage, 6,000 square feet minimum, you can find the allowed uses and development standards attached to the agenda, as well as the proposed district, the RMF or Residential Multifamily District. The present request is for RMF 2, and we have given this, based on that gross density, a designation at the end of 19, RMF-219, and that's for that 25 units capped. In reviewing the zoning ordinance's requirements for this request, with regard to suitability and community need, whether the range of uses permitted by the proposed zoning district is more suitable than the range of uses that are permitted by the current zoning district, in the present circumstance, the range of uses in the RMF 2 zoning district is more appropriate. Again, I don't say that lightly. I understand that this is historic, and I understand that there's a very well-established pattern of development in this area. But the one comforting fact I think here is that we can condition this approval on the site plan that has been provided in order to ensure that what you are going to see in the future is going to be consistent with what we are talking about here today. And this is not just an allowance of anything that would be permissible within the RMF zoning district. So in this circumstance, I do believe that the request is more appropriate and more consistent with what you've seen in the past on this site than what would happen in the future. Whether the proposed zoning district addresses a specific need in the city or county, I cannot say that housing-wise, this addresses a need, but specifically with regard to historic preservation, we do have, again, policies and ordinances that are in place in order to preserve our historic structures, and allowing this to move forward would be in furtherance of those supporting policies for preservation. Whether the zoning proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent and nearby properties, the proposed development is likely to have less adverse impact on the neighborhood than the previous school use. Whether the zoning proposal is compatible with the present zoning pattern, the proposed use as presented in the conceptual plan is consistent with the existing historic zoning and use of the development. Again, this has been a large footprint structure since the 1930s, and this petition would leave that in place. Whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use of the development and property which gives supporting grounds, the structure has been maintained and repurposed over the course of its lifetime for group living and institutional uses, but present circumstances are likely such that restoration and improvement are going to be without of the, sorry, beyond the reach, beyond the reach of most small institutional uses. And denial could result in, in essence, demolition by neglect, waiting for another potential institutional user who could make use of this footprint without issue. That is a possibility, but it is also kind of a potential threat to the historic structure. With regard to consistency, again, you all just heard that this is consistent with policy HP 3.3, which promotes and supports reinvestment in older historic places as a key component of community resiliency. Reasonable use, the subject parcel could reasonably be used as single-family homes. However, again, that would assume that the historic structure has been demolished in order to accomplish that. And again, this would be necessary in order to, in essence, bring that parcel into good standing for uses anything other than K through 12 schools or a daycare at this point. Some action by a board would be required. Adequate public services are available for the proposed development. Students in the neighborhood are districted for J.G. Smith Elementary, Myers Middle School, and the School of Liberal Studies for high school. Additionally, any needed infrastructure improvements would be addressed during the specific development plan review process. And finally, we are not within an ACUS, APZ, or proximity of an airport. Again, just to recap some of the things I've spoken about, you can see on your screen here, this is a screenshot showing the parcel within the Ardmore Conservation District. So everything covered by brown, in essence, is within the bounds of that district. And what that means is any structures that are identified as contributing would require approval of the Historic Preservation Commission in order to be demolished. The other most compelling point is the idea that there are multifamily units that fit very nicely without really even being detected within this area. And so what you can see, this is the subject parcel. Everywhere that you see outlined in red here, these are actually quadruplexes. And this photo does not take into account, there are ADUs, there are single parcels that actually just had two addresses and they're not, they're, yeah, anyway, not to create any code enforcement cases. You have multifamily situations, is my point, that are undetectable in this circumstance. And so that quadruplex building is a building type and it's of a density that obviously has been appropriate in this neighborhood since about the 70s. And here, I've called out some specific examples just to give you an idea. We do not have architectural renderings, but the petitioner understands that the expectation is that these would be structures in the future that would fit more or less within the footprint and styling of kind of what we're seeing here, architecturally perhaps a little bit more appealing. But nonetheless, the character and the footprint and their presence on the site should be similar. So 601 East 53rd, 602 East 53rd, and the one right across the street, 502 East 54th, all quadruplexes. With that, MPC staff recommends approval of the request to rezone with three conditions, and that the first one being the historic Gould Cottage and Carriage House shall be preserved. New construction shall not exceed two stories with a maximum ridge height not to exceed that of any historic structure on the property. And the third one being that future development shall be substantially consistent with the conceptual plan provided in association with the rezoning. And with that, I'm going to back out of this and put that site plan up, just in case there are some who have not seen it. But this is the referenced site plan. And with that, staff's happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Morrow? I have one. If the RMF zoning were put in place, could a school still go there?
If it were conditioned, the way that staff has recommended conditioning, it would still require, it would still be required to go back to council, through this board and to council, to address the conditions to zoning. So if that condition is adopted, it would not be allowed to go back to a school without having to come to you first.
Got you, because of the requirement to keep it pretty much the way you've shown it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Morrow, did I hear you correctly that you, it is believed that this approach would be the best approach to save the existing structure?
I believe so.
Potentially?
But most likely, development as a residential development, that's market-wise, I think that's kind of what's able to handle this right now.
Okay.
Again, I think the danger is in waiting for another institutional use that would be able to kind of bear the burden of, you know, restoration of a historic structure. But yes, I do believe that right now, this is the best approach to seeing the building preserved.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair.
Go ahead, May.
I know we're at a, the topic is rezoning, but in not necessarily the site plan, but has this been to city departments such as traffic and?
No, sir.
But that would all have to, once it's rezoned, for them to occupy those, that space with those, that number of structures, then it would have to go before every department and meet every guideline.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I guess we're ready for the applicant.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Once again, Josh Yellen here today on behalf of the applicant, and we have with us Mr. Austin Hill, who is actually the applicant and developer for this project. Many of you all know Austin from his work in the city and his regular attendance at these meetings and HDBR meetings as well. So I do just want to pull up what we have. Just to make sure that everyone is aware, I know that we are talking about this in a way that assumes that everyone is familiar with the site, but it is a very unique site in the City of Savannah. And so this is the current view from the property as you are kind of at the corner of Hull Park. And I want to state that this view from this angle is remaining unchanged, that everything we've proposed is at the rear of the site. Mr. Hill would like to put in garden space in the front and enhance that to make it more visually pleasing, but what you're seeing here is what we are trying to do. And so we do want to thank Mr. Morrow and staff for their recommendation of approval, both for the future land use map amendment, the comprehensive plan amendment, along with the request for rezoning. When we initially submitted this petition, I think it caused a lot more alarms than what we're having now, and not to say there aren't going to be concerns about the project because it is a change, but our initial application was for RMF 225. That was our best guess as we were looking at the site, and that would have permitted 40 units per acre. When we spoke to staff and when we heard concerns from the public, we came back and we reduced that density down to what is more accurate and in compliance with the plans that were submitted to you, which is RMF 219, so a density not to exceed 19 units per acre. When we initially submitted the plans, and this, you know, we can have personal opinions as to what's best, the initial plan was for 10, 11, 12 townhouses at the back of the site, kind of a larger building, but divided as townhomes. Through a meeting with the community, through a meeting with staff, it was requested that we come back with the quadruplex design because this design is in keeping with what we see in the area and for this site. And what's interesting to note, this is the 12,000 square foot site. Its original use as a childcare, I mean, I will call it an orphanage, I'm not sure that's the politically correct term, but as an orphanage, it was a multifamily residential use. We had different children living in this home. We had staff living in this home. We had people coming and going. This was not a single-family residential unit, nor has this site ever been a single-family residential unit, nor has the site directly behind it ever been single-family homes. And so when we look at this use today, we're looking at an adaptive restoration of a use. And personally, I believe that this use as multifamily and bringing multifamily into this area is more in concert with the surroundings, more in concert with the use as it was originally intended than the school. And so when we look at the items, let's see if it scrolls through, when we look at the items here, what I'm showing you right now, because it has come up multiple times, that in order for this site, when it became a school, it required a ZBA variance in 2013. And so in 2013, the Havisham School came in. Prior to that, it had been abandoned for, I want to say, two or three years. There were proposals on the table to make it an office building, and they were run out of town. There was no other users who were lining up at that time in 2013 but for the Havisham School. They came in for the variance, and they were permitted to have a school, K through 12, with up to 200 students. This school use also came with a parking variance associated with it, because 200 students with the 20 spaces they have on site is not necessarily what the ordinance would require, in addition to the staff, that they were coming and going. And so this was what Havisham School predicted at the time for their enrollment. Havisham School has been there from 2013 until May of this year. And because this topic of conversation has come up, in May of this year, I actually represented, and I won't say names, but I represented another school who came before ZBA, and we petitioned ZBA to permit a preschool at this site. That petition in April of 2023 passed. And without saying anything disparaging, that petition is obviously no longer on the table because it was not feasible for that site to be redeveloped in the use that was intended. Property went back on the market. We are now back before you with now what we see as one of the sole remaining uses to repurpose this use, which is for multifamily housing. And as Mr. Morrow mentioned, we know that we have a need for more multifamily housing in the City of Savannah. We have a need in this area. But the site, as we are laying it out with the 11 units inside and with the 14 units outside, is not out of place and is not out of character for the area. Yes, it requires a rezoning, but that doesn't mean that the multifamily use, that even the rental use is out of keeping for the area. Slightly different from what Mr. Morrow showed you, I will actually show you the Sanborn maps, not showing what exists now, but showing that in 1955, everything that I've highlighted in yellow is multifamily housing. Even these units are labeled on the plans as apartments. They were constructed as apartments. There have always been multifamily residential units in this area. This obviously does not take account of carriage houses. This does not take account of the duplexes that have somehow popped up over time, but these are the homes that were in 1955, built as multifamily. They function as part of the neighborhood. The residents are part of the neighborhood. And yes, sometimes change takes some time to get used to, but we hope to be as well ingratiated and meshed with the neighborhood as these uses are. But change takes time, and we know that our use and the design that we've proposed will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. What I do also want to mention is by way of impacts for the property, when we're talking about the uses as currently allowed, the current uses of the site, as were mentioned, are either a very large, non-conforming, single-family home, which I don't see anyone putting a 12,000 square foot, single-family home on the site. The other two uses that we're talking about is the K to 12 school or the K to 12 school with daycare. And I want to talk about the impacts of those different uses as it relates to what we're proposing, because I read the Artsy Park Open Chat Group, I don't recommend people do that, you hear a lot of comments, my kids play in Hull Park, and when the Havisham School was in session, there were people complaining about the Havisham School night and day, that the kids are using Hull Park as their personal gymnasium, that they're running kids out of the park, that the swing sets aren't available, that the trash cans are filled up with their lunches because they were using it as a lunchroom as well, and that was terrible for the neighborhood. Then the use went away, things have quieted down some. But the school use for a K to 12 school in this location with not more than 200 people would create, let me pull up my notes so I get this correct, a K to 12 school at 200 students generates 496 daily trips. That's going to the site, coming from the site, 496 traffic trips total. A daycare at 200 students is 896 daily trips. Multifamily at 25 units on the site is 166 daily trips. That by us coming in with the multifamily proposal, we are greatly enhancing and greatly reducing the traffic impact on the neighborhood. Everything that we've shown on the site plan, we are parking compliant, we are providing everything required under the ordinance on-site, and we do want to minimize those impacts so that we can be a part of the neighborhood. And being a part of the neighborhood is being a good neighbor. And so as Mr. Morrow mentioned, and as the staff report mentioned, both for the comprehensive plan and for the rezoning, staff is in support of this request because it is the adaptive reuse of a historic building that might have reached its functional obsolescence. We are trying to bring it back. We are going to restore the building, but to do so, we need to add the density on the back of the site, which is the whole purpose of today's rezoning. So we do respectfully request that you approve of today's request, as has been recommended by staff, to rezone the site to the RMF 219, and we are in full agreement with the conditions as recommended by staff and are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Yellen? Questions for Mr. Yellen?
All right. Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Yellen. Mr. Yellen, you did say all of the parking is contained on site, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Could you tell me how much parking would be required for a school of 200 students? I think it was in that handout that you had, but I didn't have a chance to look at it closely.
I do not have that. So the handout, let me go back to that. This was actually the variance request that came before 2013. This would have been what was required under the old zoning ordinance, so don't want to state that this is gospel now, but this is when they were asking for the parking variance so that the Haversham School could go in, they were trying to do a calculation as to parking required, but they also had, and the point of this chart was that they had high school students who were driving to school that they were trying to account for. And Mr. Morrow will address that.
Actually, I'll let you, I'm just going to pull it up on the screen so everyone can see. That's all. See how quick I can be going over here. If it wants to cooperate. No. Where did zoning go? Okay. Down. Parks zoning. They never cooperate when they want them to. On-street parking. There we go. Okay.
Just curious.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any final questions? All right, we're going to go to comments. And if we could keep our comments to two minutes or less, we have a few people who wanted to comment. I have Mr. Allen, Robert Allen.
If you'd state your name for the record when you get up here, please.
Thank you all. My name is Robert Allen, and I live at 523 East 53rd Street, new resident to Savannah. Actually, what I was going to speak about today, I'm a little bit off on this because presentation by the petitioner had more or different information than what was submitted by staff and the documents that we were able to see as residents, so not quite sure. You know, it would be helpful if we had had as much information as staff has. We are intelligent people, and I feel like after seeing this, we got a lot of spin. I'm not going to go completely through my presentation here because, again, it's, things have changed because of the petitioner's presentation. Some questions were answered, like the parking and so forth, which was a concern. That was not highlighted. Let me start with the first thing, though. The posting for the meeting here that changed is not on Hull Park. I believe that's the responsibility of the city or the petitioner, but they're still showing the September 26th meeting, which means unless you've got other information, you, homeowner, you wouldn't even know about this. And so I don't know if that's a violation of your rules or not, but the posting for this meeting is not there, even as of today. As far as justification in the petitioner's application, which is all we have to look at to see what the recommendation is, you know, I find that that's lacking. I mean, we talk about additional housing for the area. Well, when we talk about shortage of housing in Savannah, there's no shortage of housing at the level of income that's likely to be had for that community. In fact, there's a surplus of housing. The deficiency in housing is at the lower-income area, so I don't know how this unit is going to affect the overall housing deficiency in the city of Savannah. Now, maybe that's not an important part of the reason for the change, but it's what the petitioner submitted to you all as presented to us. So, you know, that's one of the things we thought you all were looking at, but obviously there's more to this than just that. That's what I would call spin. It sounds good. Historic preservation sounds good, but at the end of the day, we're going to have, as I can see, 20-something units, all the traffic associated with that, a multi-unit building, which is not a fourplex, it's a big facility of homes, which does change the character of the community. Now, if that's okay, if that's appropriate, then what you all sent us should have basically spelled that out and why it's appropriate. What I've seen in the material that's sent out is a lot of opinions. We think that this is best for the community, but there's no analysis, there's no information, there's nothing that supports that information. It's just one or two staff folks' opinion about what's there. That's more important to us as homeowners. In the end, what I'm going to mention is we bought the house here back last year, and we bought it looking for a community, single-family homes, residential community, and the community that we have in, there's multiples of communities that are like that. Washington Park Denver is one of those communities, the Highlands in Denver. There are communities that are unique, and that's what we were looking for, and that's what we've found. We were not looking for communities where there would be large, multiple, multifamily homes and so forth. Not that that's a problem, but that's not what we were looking for. The staff's designation of our community as evolved, as evolving into a wide variety of housing, of which, single-family homes is a part of it, is not correct. We are a single-family home community where the multifamily situation is basically people splitting out their homes for maybe a second-story home or something of that nature, and there's a few quadplexes in the area, but basically it's single-family homes. So the description, my problem is the description that was submitted to us through the staff's information about what was going on doesn't really accurately reflect what's going on here. So I'm totally confused about just what's going to, what's going to happen in the community if this project goes through. Again, as you can see, I wrote out my response, which doesn't even fit based upon what I've heard here today. It's just, there's new information, which is great, but it should have been there in the beginning when we're looking at it, which would have made my, at least my assessment a lot easier. So, and that's probably more than two minutes, but I'll have to go back to the, to the well and look at this. But again, the first step is why, if there's not a posting, have you even met the requirement to have the meeting?
Time is up, Mr. Allen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Lind? If you'd give us your name when you get up to the mic.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Lind, a resident of East 54th Street, just a few houses down from the proposed development site. Our family has called this neighborhood home for over a decade, and today I'm speaking not just as a concerned resident, but as a parent, a neighbor, and an advocate of preserving the character of our community. While I recognize and support the need for development and change, it must be undertaken with care, consideration, and above all, respect for the community it serves. My family and I chose to live here surrounded by the charm of single-family homes, the safe streets, safe enough, and wonderful park for our family, and the availability of on-street parking. This proposed development with its significant number of rental units directly challenges each of these ideals. Street parking may seem trivial, but for families like mine, it's crucial. There are many residents, me included, without a driveway or garage. So where are we to park when spaces become scarce? How do we ensure the safety of our children when traffic is dramatically increased? The property's adjacency to Hull Park, as we looked at, amplifies our concerns. The park serves as a haven and recreational space for our families and children, and influx of traffic potentially jeopardizes the safety of our youngest residents. Additionally, I was taken aback to learn about the open house on October 5th, when many of us who will be directly impacted by the development were neither informed nor invited. I think I might have been 301 feet away from the structure. But how can we truly engage sentiment when our voices remain unheard until a moment like this? While I value the effort to preserve the historic structures, community preservation goes beyond protecting facades of buildings. It's about understanding and uplifting the neighborhood's essence and charm and collaborating together on a vision of progress that we all share. Specifically, I'd like to see evaluating alternate proposals. Certainly, another institutional use would be great, or with fewer rental units. Conducting a comprehensive study on parking and traffic impacts around the proposed site, which it sounds like is happening, but certainly that's important to all of us, and implementing specific strategic safety measures around Hull Park. And actually including and engaging with residents before and throughout the development process. I urge the commission to reflect on this rezoning proposal. Progress is vital, yet it should be in harmony with the established community and its values. Please prioritize the voices and concerns of those who have long called this neighborhood home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lind? Or did you have any for Mr. Allen? No questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Mark Lysia?
My name is Mark Lysica. I own the property at 512 East 54th. I've owned that property for 20-plus years. My son is living in it now. It's directly across the street from where it's going to be developed. That property existed in a single-family area at the time of the purchase, and that's one of the reasons we were drawn to that area, to dovetail on what my neighbors commented on earlier. I would also like to address something Mr. Morrow's staff advised, and the petitioner spoke regarding the impact of this school versus the residence, and the number of trips, and, you know, yada, yada, yada. Mark Twain often said there's two types of lies, or three types, lies, damn lies, and statistics. You can make a number, say whatever you want. The fact is, that school was open 180 days a year, and a 25-unit apartment complex is going to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a year, 365 days a week. There's going to be residents, one to two per apartment. I counted maybe 24 spots on there, so that's going to be another 25 people prowling around the neighborhood looking for parking. They're going to have guests, they're going to have deliveries all hours of the day and night. It's going to be disruptive for the neighbors, it's going to propose safety concerns for all the neighborhood children going to Charles Ellis, Jacob G. Smith, some go the other direction, and you have Arts Academy students as well. And I think I have one other point, if you will bear with me. Yes. So the property, I believe, is still contingent, and I'm assuming the sale is contingent upon getting the proper variance. And in order for that to happen, it's, it's not a zero-sum game. Somebody's going to have to win, and somebody's going to have to lose. So the petitioner, if this goes through, his property value is going to go up, his investment, and the residents are going to lose in that game because our property values are going to go down. Nobody's house is going to be as valuable with 25 units sitting across the street. So that's basically my concern, and I'll address any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Wood?
My name is Artist Wood. I appreciate the effort Mr. Hill has made to preserve the Ghul Cottage. The question is, is the price too high? The largest dwelling units in Artsley Park, Chatham Crescent, of which Ardmore is a part, are a few quadruplexes scattered among our predominantly single-family neighborhood, as you've heard. We have no place that is near the density of the multifamily units this proposal incorporates. Its impact would substantially alter the character of this area and no doubt be precedent-setting to eventually change the adjacent lot now occupied by the living vine to become just as dense. Traffic and parking, as we've heard, a large concern, especially next to Hull Park, which is mostly designed for very young children. Other potential problems that come to mind, including places for garbage cans, garbage pickup, refuge, also if there are 25 units with one bedroom each. Now, I've heard that, but I want to know, is that what you're proposing? No. Okay. So I'm not clear on that. But at any rate, it causes, I think the gentleman that just spoke was quite thoughtful and accurate about the other cars that will be involved if this city happens. And then, if you have this many also, they're all rentals?
Yeah.
So that means, I think, in my experience, pushing 90 years, I've rented a lot of places, but I don't stay there long, and I just see a lot of moving in and out if you've got 25 places there. When a request for rezoning comes to city council, as this one must, members invariably ask the applicant, have you discussed this with the neighbors? Well, the answer is no to date. And I appreciate the fact that it was posted, but I can't, I mean, it's just very wrong to not have updated this, this date. And you have let the, we have been informed at the board level. The board has not yet asked to convene the neighborhood. So you're looking at about 1,600 households. Very few know about this. If they do, they have misinformation. So I think we need more details and opportunity for all residents to discuss this proposal with the developer. Please allow for a continuance so that such dialogue can take place. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wood. All right, would the applicant like to come up and, petitioner? Oh, I'm sorry. I do have two more. I have one online. Did you submit a card?
I signed it outside, and I also tried online. I need to go home.
Okay. I have a Catherine Simmons. Yes. Could you fill out a card for us, and we'll get Ms. Simmons on first? Ms. Simmons, are you there?
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Simmons. I live on East 54th Street, and I also applaud Austin's desire to keep the facade of the building and maintain the historic beauty of the site, but adding this complex behind it is absurd. The density is, and of traffic in particular, I think that's our biggest concern, the parking and the traffic, is going to alter the neighborhood drastically. I think on his chart, he has the flow of traffic coming in and out of Hull Park along one-way streets, which sounds good in theory, but the reality is people aren't going to leave the block to go park in their complex if they can just park on the street and walk over. I think we are all going to see the deliveries increase, just general, way too much traffic. I think the perfect response, if you do want to make it multifamily, if you do want to go through with this, is to limit the amount of units to what the existing structures can accommodate. I think the lot behind would then provide plenty of, plenty of parking for two cars per unit and visitors, and it would also allow for a traffic flow that would be reasonable. I, of course, would rather see another school come in there. I know the Artsley Park Open Chat, people complain about anything in the park that doesn't go their way. I found it beautiful to have kids play in the park. I think that's a good use of it. And traffic was a problem, you know, two 30-minute blocks, morning and afternoon, and there was no traffic on the weekends unless they were having a special event, but that was nothing that our neighborhood couldn't swallow that way, that way. I think the weekends and the afternoons and early evenings are the most popular time at the park for children, so it would be nice to have whatever the uses be cleared out, evenings and weekends, and not 24/7, like was mentioned by an earlier neighbor. It is, you know, we talked about families in this neighborhood, these units are not designed for families. designed for families. What I was told at the development meeting was that these were going to be one-bedroom units. I don't know if that's changed, but certainly that is marketing to a demographic that is not families. So, I mean, it's couples, maybe starter families, but there's, you know, I don't know. I hope you guys reconsider this until more studies, more data has been shown on the traffic issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Tracy O'Connell. I live directly across the street on 55th Street. And so, a lot of these discussions of the data and the traffic counts and all that, I can tell you firsthand that a small elementary school is nothing compared to what's proposed. I do want to thank Mr. Hill for trying to save Gould Cottage. I have no issue with that. My issue really comes in with these three duplexes in the back. And everybody has kind of touched on, but some key points is, to make these three duplexes, which, again, I understand the economic realities, those three duplexes are doubling the density of what could be done between Gould Cottage and the Carriage House. If you take that out, the parking problems go away, the traffic problems go away. For example, one of the duplexes is sitting on the current driveway from 54th Street. Their plan to be able to get this third duplex in there on the north side of the lot on 54th Street is going to funnel all of the traffic on 55th Street to the one-way on Hull Park, in and out of a single driveway across from Hull Park. They don't need that duplex. If you take, again, take out those four units, which are probably two adults, which are really eight cars, eight parking spaces, it gets a little more manageable. I'm also concerned with the parking that has been touched on, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I understand there's a balance here, preserving historical and the economics. I think that you all should look very hard at, do they need three duplexes to double the size? That's 12 of the 25 units. And I submit that they don't, and they certainly don't need the one that's going to completely change the traffic pattern and throw off the lack of, you know, that's going to take away parking spaces as well. So, I would encourage you all to deny that until they come back with a better, well-thought-out plan to balance all of these, particularly the parking and traffic.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Would the petitioner like to come up and respond?
Yes, ma'am. Josh Yellen, once again, on behalf of the applicant, do just want to, again, state that staff is recommending approval for both the comprehensive plan amendment and for the rezoning. I've heard concerns about traffic, which will be less with this development than there will be with the school. I want to state unequivocally, when I came before ZBA, to get the Early Childhood Education Center approved, their hours of operation were 6:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 365 days a year, but four weekends and holidays. That's how daycare facilities work. I have a two-year-old in a similar facility. They don't have summer vacations. They are in school each and every day so that working families can actually work. And so, that 800-car traffic count is day in, day out, Monday through Friday, including the summertime. While I appreciate the concerns about the density, there is, the plan that we have before you is the plan that we proposed. If we take away a quadplex, we'd probably, based upon the economics of the development, be looking to put those units then back into the building. I was here before this board when we did the rezoning for the St. Pius School. And to make those numbers work, it's very similar. We had to go in and do 35 studio apartments within that building, very similar to here. We could probably go and take all the density and put it into the school, but it wouldn't be multifamily in the sense of creating units that are actually rentable to families. It would be a multi-studio building, but it would not be a multifamily building. And part of the appeal of this location, we've heard concerns about the park, the park is an amenity for everyone in the neighborhood, including the new neighbors who were trying to put into this building. As Mr. Morrow mentioned, the bus is within one-quarter of a mile. Even looking in the other direction, there are buses on waters. We have the red and white within a mile of this facility. We have the amenities that neighborhoods look for for multifamily apartments. As it relates to the density outside of trying to re-engineer the proposal, as was mentioned in the staff report, the actuality on the ground is that, from a density calculation, the quadruplexes across the street are a higher density than what we are proposing. Yes, we are putting in 25 units, but they are not at a density that is any different than the neighbors', and they are, in fact, less than what's in there for the neighborhood. And so, because we're decreasing the traffic impacts that would be there from the school, because we are feeling a need within the community for multifamily housing, because this site has a historic building on it that we need to rehabilitate, we need to go in, someone needs to do the work. I tried to get a daycare in here, that daycare is not happening. There was a school that was here, that school has left. There's not a whole lot of other answers to come in here. And so, what we do have is a local developer, like Austin, who is actively involved in the preservation of historic structures, who lives very close to the property, who is a known member of the community, who is coming in with the best proposal possible, and we're keeping it local. If there are problems, people know who I am, people know who Austin are, but we're here with the best proposal for this site, and like staff recommended for approval, we do respectfully request that you approve of the same. This is but the first step of the process. We are here to City Council. As Mr. Morrow mentioned, there is also the site plan review, that if the access that we proposed doesn't work for city standards, and we need to open up a second access point, we are happy to do that. This is our concept plan for now. When we hear from city staff, we will make the changes necessary to make the site plan function in accordance with all rules and requirements. So, with that, we do respectfully request that you approve of today's rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Yellen? All right, thank you. Any discussion? Tracy?
I always start this with, I'm new at this, so if I'm asking things that are out of our purview, I apologize. But I have a lot of questions. I think it's awesome you're maintaining that architectural integrity of the Gould Cottage. That's great. And it is a beautiful property. And as I was looking at the photo, I'm thinking about those three buildings surrounding it. And I get the economic thing. You can't do this project with what you're paying for the land and the renovation and the whole thing. I understand. But, when you build these other three quads, are you going to try to maintain some sort of architectural integrity that would complement the cottage?
Yeah, I will let Austin speak to that.
Yes.
Because we know that we showed the quadruplexes in the area. Austin's goal would be to make it a Tudor-style for those.
Ms. Amick, you're speaking my language now. I'm an architecture nerd. So, Cletus Bergen was the original architect of the Gould Cottage, which was actually donated by the Gould family, who is actually out of New York. They had a number of residences at the Jekyll Island Club, and they were known for their insistence on really good architecture for their cottages at the Jekyll Island Club. So, yes, I don't, as a preservationist, I do not love duplication of buildings. I think it always comes out wrong, or looking cheap, or something, you know, Disney World. But, what my intention would be is to take different aspects from Mr. Bergen's design of the Gould Cottage and incorporating them, but also differentiating each quadplex, you know, in a different light. I don't even love timberline shingles, so the Gould Cottage is a Vermont slate roof, which we will be restoring. So, I would like to do something that is a more permanent roof, like that Vermont slate on all of these structures, but all of them would be totally subservient to the Gould Cottage, which is the crown jewel of the property, and frankly, of the neighborhood, in my opinion. So, yes, so that they would be all very architecturally interesting. We fronted them to 54th and 55th Streets to try to maintain the same neighborhood feel that is there, to, because the back of the lot feels a little odd, the way that it is now, and to create that street frontage that would really keep the neighborhood presence. And like Josh said, we'd be happy to, there are two curb cuts currently for the old carpool line that goes through, and we could certainly maintain those curb cuts. I also don't like seeing parking, so we were trying to screen the parking in the inside of those units as much as possible, both with structures and with, frankly, a really, really great garden atmosphere. Josh mentioned, there was, there are renderings that show from the very beginning. I can't find any detailed pictures, but there was a fountain in the front in the triangular part up by Hull Park that we are looking to restore, and just create a great garden cottage. But, sorry for the long-winded answer, but yes, they, you know, it would be great architecture. I promise you that.
Thank you. Some further questions? So, there's been numbers thrown around. There's 25 units, but how many are studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom? Do you have that planned at this point?
So, the, I know that the cottage is a mixture of two-bedroom and one-bedroom units. They're all larger units, because we have 11 units going in approximately 12,000 square feet, so they're all good-sized units. There is only, there was only one spot that we weren't able to create a larger space that turned out to be a pretty good-sized studio unit, which is in the old kind of living room part of the orphanage. So, that's, there's only one studio unit in the whole development.
And if you assume, then, two cars per unit, that's 50 cars, and there's 16 spaces?
I believe that it's drawn out for 26 or 27 spaces.
It says 16 on your, this little thing. Am I not seeing that right? It's tiny, it's 20, okay, it's 26. Yes.
So, once again, I mean, going, you know, we left space, there is obviously, we tweaked this plan when staff asked us to do quadruplexes rather than townhouses. So, this parking layout, to be honest with you, is still centered around the townhouse layout. Clearly, we have more space there where we can add parking, you know, and certainly be flexible on that.
Okay, and one other question?
Sorry, I answered the question.
Yes.
The zoning ordinance requires one space per unit, so we are providing excess parking as opposed to...
Because it's 25, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, is this, does this area in Ardsley allow short-term vacation rentals? So, this is long-term?
I hope not. I'm not a short-term vacation rental guy.
Just wanted to be sure.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but just a comment, as being a member of a generation that is owning less and less and renting more and more, I think in our general discussions and arguments that we put forth, we should avoid making the renting class seem as less than desirable. And just in general, I know in Ardsley, people want families, but from the real estate side, you can't really market families, because that becomes a violation for housing. So, those are two things that I think in our discussions we should probably avoid.
Any other?
I would piggyback that. I wholeheartedly agree with that sentiment, but in addition to that, there are, just as there are less buyers and more and more renters, there are less families as we move forward, because people aren't having kids the way they used to. Just want to add that, because that was a very valid point.
Tom?
So often, we get, this is zoning requests, and so often, we get site plans that we kind of get wrapped around the axle, when these are really just suggestions and thoughts, not necessarily the final plan. So, I guess my question is, this is subject to change and further development to this site plan. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Based on the staff recommendation that came before you, what we're trying to do is show substantially similar, that this is the concept that we have on the table for the restoration of the cottage for the units, along with the restoration of the Carriage House, and then the three additional buildings to be put on site. What we were hoping to do is develop substantial conformity with that, but as we go through the SPR process, as mentioned, if that second access becomes necessary, if a building needs to shift, if the parking needs to change, that's all something that 100%, we have to make those changes when we go and meet with all city staff. And Mr. Morrow and his team have to then approve it again to make sure that it's in compliance with what you vote on today.
Any other questions? Any more discussion? All right, I'm open for a motion.
Real quick point of clarification, we're voting on these items individually, correct?
Yes, we are. Wayne, did you have a comment?
I just have a question, or just something to clarify in my mind. You stated that the adjacent multifamily was a higher density. What is that higher density? Do you know offhand? If you don't know, that's fine.
Right. It was in the staff report, but it's 20-something. Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Coles, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation for the Flume Amendment to the residential to general.
Second. Noah.
Any discussion? All right. Ms. Amick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Yes.
Mr. Kegler?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Nochika?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
I tussled with it a little bit, but yes.
Mr. Weywoodie?
Yes.
All right. And I, too, vote yes.
So, that was for future land use, ma'am?
That was future land use, ma'am. All right, now for the zoning.
Coles, I make the motion to approve staff's recommendation with the three conditions, that the historic Gould Cottage and Carriage House shall be preserved, that any new construction shall not exceed two stories with a maximum ridge height not to exceed that of the historic structures on the property, and three, the future development shall be substantially consistent with the conceptual plan provided to us today in association with the rezoning.
Noah, second.
All right. Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Ms. Epstein?
Yes.
Mr. Kegler?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Nochika?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Weywoodie?
Yes.
And I, too, say yes. So, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, if I may, if anyone in the audience that's a resident wants to continue this further, City Council is the next forum, so speak to your council or councillor.
Not a done deal yet.
In that district, I think, is Mr. Palumbo.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations, we don't have any other public, public, or any other business.
Ms. Jarrett, we do have under the other business to correct the scrivener's error.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
There was a scrivener's error in the bylaws. The last time we brought it forward, we were supposed to change the title of Executive Director to Executive Director/CEO, and that was missed in the final presentation, so I'm asking that we be allowed to correct that through a motion to correct the scrivener's error, so that the bylaws will reflect that change.
Coles' motion to correct the scrivener's error to include Executive Director/CEO.
Noah, second.
All right, let's do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good deal.
We do have a need for an executive session. If someone would make the motion that this board now enter into a closed...
Ms. Jarrett, can you turn your mic on, please, so that we're recording you? Thank you.
Thank you. This board now enter into a closed session is allowed by Chapter 14 of Title 50 of the Georgia Code for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, if you would make...
Coles makes a motion to withdraw from executive session. Davis, second.
All right. More an executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed?
A motion to return from executive session.
Coles, so moved.
Noah, second.
No...